Good evening. The date is Monday, June 17th and it's 5:30 PM and we are going to begin our work session. And we're going to start out by listening to a city update from Mr. Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. The City of Pueblo is inviting the public to an open house to discuss and understand the Unified Development, Zoning and Subdivision Codes and Regulations. The open house is scheduled for Tuesday, June 18th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the George William Meeting Room located in Pueblo Parks and Rec Administration Building in City Park. The Arkansas River Activity Restrictions are lifted. We encourage you to monitor the City of Pueblo's website or the city's social media pages to update some restrictions, warnings and closures. Pueblo Fire Department is currently handing out free buckets ahead of the Fourth of July holiday to encourage citizens to fill them with water and put used fireworks in them instead of starting a fire in your trash can. You can pick one up at any of the 10 fire stations across the city. The City of Pueblo is closed in observance of the Juneteenth holiday, excuse me, holiday on Wednesday, July 19th and will reopen with normal business hours on Thursday, June 20th. And that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Mr. McCain. Anything from council? Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll get started with our first guest tonight and we are going to be talking about the Unified Development Code Process with our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Scott Hobson.
I just wanted to be able to introduce the team from the consultant group that is working on the Unified Development Code this evening. Graham Smith with Multi Studios Inc. is going to do most of the presentation. Alexander Purvis Smith is also with Multi Studios is here. And then two of the subconsultant members of the team, Matt Ashby with Ayers and Associates and Josh Alhava with Ayers and Associates are also here to have a presentation to kind of give you an update, status of where they're at with the project and be, have you answer or open or ask any questions about the project? So with that, I'll turn that over, turn everything over to Graham Smith and his team.
Good evening.
Yes, go ahead and proceed.
All right, thank you. My name is Graham Smith. I'm with Multi Studio. We're a consulting firm out of Kansas City. And we have been hired to rewrite your Unified Development Ordinance. And with me tonight is Matt Ashby from Ayers and we're going to go through kind of a quick presentation and then we'd be happy to answer any questions or comments or things like that. We wanted to give you a quick introduction to our team. You may see some of these folks kind of wandering around town from time to time and so I'll give you an idea who we are and what we do. I want to talk to you briefly about our project approach, go through a little bit about our community engagement, which has been going on generally since about January, February timeframe. And as Scott Hobson said, we're set for our first public open house tomorrow night. And then give you again a project overview and then any discussion or questions you may have. Our team is made up of two firms, Multi Studio, who I represent and Ayers, which Matt represents. Multi Studio, we turned 50 years old today, or today, this year. And for the last 40 years, we've been doing community development and working with communities like Pueblo all over the Midwest and Front Range and really all over the country, doing planning, urban design and writing zoning codes or Unified Development Ordinances. And with me tonight is Alexander Purvis Smith and then some of our folks, Chris Brewster, who you'll meet in subsequent meetings, will be supporting this project. He's, he's our attorney and code writer. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Yeah, thank you for having us here. Thank you for having us here. Matt Ashby with Ayers Associates and we are 60 years old, I believe, this year. And I would say that our planning group really focuses on interdisciplinary solutions to complex project, projects and issues. And most of our background, myself and Josh who's here in the room, as well as Carlin, we've served in local governments and have experience actually implementing codes like this. And so we really bring a reality check to the conversations to try and make sure that we're providing what it is you need in a code update, but also to make sure that it is implementable and effective in achieving your goals. So our members will be responsible for elements of the public engagement as well as the historic preservation plan update and outreach.
Thanks, Matt. I'm going to go through these. As Matt said, we've, we've worked together several times on Unified Development Ordinances over the past 10 years. And we've teamed on those for probably eight or 10 communities together. So this arrangement's nothing new for us. And where we bring the code expertise, as Matt said, they bring kind of the, the public engagement as well as the implementation side of things and making sure that what we're proposing or what the community would like to see in the code is actually implementable and will be used by the development community itself. So quickly about our approach. We're very experienced in Unified Development Ordinances and we know that the one thing that we need to leave you with is a logical framework for your new code. That logical framework will do many things. One, it'll reorganize your code into a very streamlined and coherent code that anybody in the community, elected officials, developers, citizens, neighborhood leaders, staff can walk through that code and know what to expect at any given time during a process. The other big thing that we want to do with your code, the remaining bullet points here is really, we want to focus on how we can simplify and streamline your code. That means plain language. It means where we can turn text into graphics and tables and be more explanatory with them. We're going to do that. The other piece is starting with a purpose-driven code or an intent-based code where we're going to build uncertainty and we'll talk about that in a minute, but also provide flexibility. And what we think that starts with the intent statement so that everybody who's involved in a development project from the developer to the approval process knows what the intent of a standard or a district in your zoning code is intended to do. As I said, we want to build certainty, but we also want to build in flexibility. We don't pretend that we have the exact answer to every development proposal. And so we want to make sure that if there's a better idea out there, a different way to implement that same intent, those same standards, then we want to make sure that that's allowable. And then finally, what sets our codes apart from other codes is that we take a typology or a design-based approach where we focus on the design elements of your community, whether that's the context that it's happening in, the scale, the form of development, open space types, street design types, building types. And those types of things, really the kit apart that builds your community and allow developers in different contexts to bring those pieces together in a manner that implements the places that the community desires as well as your comprehensive plan has laid out. As I said, we want to create certainty and flexibility. Typically, those two things don't go together. But what you typically have in a, in a set of regulations or code is a set of regulations that may or may not relate to one another. And when those, when a development doesn't fit those specific codes or meet those codes, then you provide a variance if you want to see that happen. And so that should be a very owner's process to get a variance. What we would rather do is shown on the screen here is really build a system of building and define why we're doing that for the community and allow them to participate. And it really starts with your comprehensive plan, laying out the policies and standards of what the future of Pueblo is. And then through the code, we can define the standards, but we can also define different decision-making criteria. We can provide areas where different alternative solutions or exceptions may be appropriate based on criteria, not just based on the will of a developer or a certain situation. And then, and then finally, where a variance is needed, that still needs to be part of the process, but it is a very technical piece of development. And so making that not necessarily harder, but making that more of a stretch is something that we would like to see happen and allow the flexibility within the code for things to happen more, more easily. When we talk about a design-based approach, it's really about the typologies. I mentioned the street types, open space types, block types, frontage types, building types. And so focusing on the design of each one of those elements, not just if it's business or residential or what density of residential it is or what the floor area ratio, all these technical terms that the general public may or may not have any knowledge of, we really want to focus on things that are understandable and relate to one another. We think this gives us an opportunity to be more, more sensitive to the context and making sure that things that happen in that context collaborate with one another and relate to one another. And then we also have a process outlined here. You can see in three phases. Just recently, we expanded the scope a little bit to undertake a deeper dive into the historic preservation aspect of your current code as well as update those historic preservation guidelines over the next several months. And then also looking at the street classifications in the city and doing some background research so that we understand the street classifications and those applications before we get into writing the code itself. So we've extended our timeline a little bit in that assessment phase that upfront, learning as much as we possibly can. We'll stretch out to about September. And then later this year in August and September, we'll actually start writing the code and giving you all that framework upfront so that we can fill in the pieces. And then mid, mid, middle of the year, next year, start the adoption process on a new code. Having supported all of that with a tremendous amount of engagement at multiple levels and I'll let Matt talk about that.
Yeah, so code is a little bit different of an engagement process. We lean heavily on your comprehensive plan and the vision that the community has created through that. And this process is really an effort to implement that vision in an efficient and effective way. So we really look at identifying engagement for this process, not being necessarily a blue sky what, but really using the comprehensive plan to inform that vision. We then take a layered approach of identifying various technical folks that may be involved in the conversation. You know, looking at the experts in the individual fields of transportation, parks and recreation, engineering utilities, and make sure that the code that we're creating addresses a lot of those technical concerns as well. And looking to provide different opportunities for engagement, we actually have a session tomorrow that will be one of the first community opportunities to engage. And also then looking at providing community engagement through the steering committee as well, which provides us with a different set of voices to inform the process. So some of our goals are to inform the Pueblo community at every phase. We want to make sure that folks know what steps are being taken. We also, again, as I mentioned before, will rely heavily on those established plans and policies that have already been adopted and vetted through extensive engagement. So again, we're not trying to reinvent the vision here. What we're trying to do is to implement that vision that's been already established. We do want to strategically leverage the experience of your local boards, the planning commission yourselves, as well as staff and other stakeholders to make sure that we're taking advantage of their knowledge and depth of experience with cases and projects that have been experienced over the years. And finally, then we want to present a range of alternatives to you all, to staff, to the planning commission, to the community, to make sure that we've provided you with options to consider that hopefully meet the goals of your vision in an effective and, and clear method. So the layered approach that we take is generally to provide those general big picture concepts that apply to the broader community. We'll then look at providing focused and topical material to stakeholders that are concerned about those priority issues. So right information at the right place, at the right time for the right people to make sure that we are giving folks the opportunity to engage in this process how they are most comfortable and how much they want to. Again, this is a technical implementation exercise. So there's some things that folks may not be interested in that level of detail. We want to give them an opportunity to understand how the vision from the comprehensive plan is being translated then into that detailed code. So write information, write hands at the right time. So who do engage, groups to engage? Obviously yourselves as city council will be heavily involved with the adoption process and throughout the creation of the code from here until that time. The steering committee, which includes the Planning and Zoning Commission, we just met with those folks a few minutes ago and had a great discussion, as well as a technical committee largely made up of staff. Also key community stakeholders and the community at large will be the folks that we engage. Where and how those engagement events will take place through workshops, focus groups and interviews, different tours. We've done different elements of virtual tours or handouts or physical tours. We find that once folks are experiencing and in a environment, it's easier to talk about a community than abstract terms like setbacks and technical numbers. And obviously we'll have open house events and adoption hearings that are more formal. So both formal and informal ways for folks to engage. And then finally, the, the tools for engagement include things like assessments, which we're working on currently. Best practices reports, so small, one to two-page handouts that may dive deep into a subject topic. Different modeling and analysis. So looking at how a certain regulation might impact a neighborhood or an area of the community. Again, those project or place tours, video and social media is another great outreach method that we use and try and tailor to the local community and the need to access that information. And finally, tactical urbanism, which is almost a demonstration, temporary installation or demonstration is another tool that we have used in the past to help illustrate codes.
Thank you, Matt. So as your role as city council, you know, I, I hope you stay involved as long as you want and take on as much information as you want or need. But ultimately, this is a document that's going to come back to you for, for your approval. It has to be adopted by the city council. And so we hope that you stay involved and keep, bring your individual perspective as well as the community's perspective and participate in the process. So we wanted to give you just a quick idea of what we've been working on and some of the things that we've found to date. And so we start, as Matt's mentioned and I mentioned previously, we start with your comprehensive plan. That really sets the policy and strategy defining who Pueblo wants to be in the future. And so that's our starting point for crafting this implementation tool to implement that. So you'll see some of the goals on the, on the screen here from the plan as well as from the requests that we responded to, to, to better align your code, to bring it more modern and to create more effective development standards to facilitate development in the community. From those goals and from a review of your current code, we, excuse me, of, of the new plan, we identified four kind of broad guiding principles. One is housing options and neighborhood design. So looking at how we enable more housing types to be built. But not only focused on the housing types themselves, but what's unique about some of the neighborhoods in the community? How do we build that into the code and how do we help build additional standards and that create unique environments within the, within the community? Strong local and regional connections has everything to do with multimodal transportation. Looking at the connectivity network and making sure that destinations, neighborhoods and people in general are connected. But also drilling down into those connections and what are those street designs that really facilitate either pedestrian movement, possibly transit movement. We've done a really good job. Most cities across the country have done a really good job at accommodating the automobile. But we want to try and design streets that are appropriate for different contexts in your community. And we'll design for all modes. Growing smarter and productive districts, corridors and centers is from the plan focusing on those destinations, focusing on the relationship of those destinations or corridors to the surrounding neighborhoods and making sure that the, the commercial areas and mixed-use areas are as productive for the city as possible, but also making sure that they relate to the neighborhoods and residents that are living around them in a, in a sensitive way. And then finally, from the plan, this idea of celebrating Pueblo, which is emphasizing those distinct community characteristics. So whether that's definition of open space or street designs, street, excuse me, streetscape elements, things that can be built in to the code that really define Pueblo or help define Pueblo for the future from a design perspective is what we want to do. So this is, I apologize, this is a little bit of an eye test, but these are some of the topics that we've started thinking about. We've talked to our steering committee this afternoon about some of these topics and really starting to dive down on these guiding principles in a more definitive way and talking about different housing types, different street design types, how we connect different destinations. Those urban corridor, or excuse me, those commercial corridors in downtown area. Parking is always an issue. It's always a discussion topic. And so we're going to start diving into that more and more. And then finally, some of those features that define Pueblo itself. And I think that's it. Well. And then our, our latest piece that we've been working on is what we call our code assessment. So doing a deep dive into your existing code. Those topics on the page before kind of framed how we looked at your code. And these are some of the kind of broad questions that have come out of this that we talked to our steering committee this afternoon about and we'll be talking to our technical committee tomorrow about, and we're going to engage the public tomorrow night about. And so just again, some very broad questions at this point that we have to help us round out our knowledge about the community and where the community is headed. And finally, as I said, we're finishing up the code assessment. Development pattern analysis is ready. We're going to publish those two documents at the same time here in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll get to work on our priority issues and best practices coming out of that. Ultimately giving you that code framework that I talked about. And then continuing our, our engagement with our different groups throughout the summer and fall. And that's all we had for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Yes, Councilor Ayla.
This is great. I mean, this is long overdue and I'm so glad you're doing it. But as far as individual counselors involvement, what does that look like?
We've set up a strategy to get, engage you as a group throughout the process, but individual, one of the things we've set up and we can really defer to however you want to be involved. But we've set up a structure of what we call stakeholder interviews or focus groups. And we've actually already started those with the development community and the design community, both architects and engineers. And we could certainly set up an interview during the process. What we're doing now with those folks, we could set up an interview for you all individually if we wanted to. As part of that process, what we're doing with them now is trying to get an understanding of their use of the code as what we would call kind of super users, being on the, in the design industry or the development industry and using it on a regular basis. But an interview could be set up if that's what the council desired.
And who would we get a hold of to get that done?
That would be me.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Flores.
Yes, thank you for being here. This is really interesting information, something that's long overdue. On page 15, where you have opportunities for engagement, this is just a, a thought. I think one of the groups that you need to get together with is our Urban Renewal Authority. They are quite active and have been very involved in lots of projects here in Pueblo lately.
Okay.
And I would encourage you to add that on to that list.
Sure.
One of my concerns for a long time, I used to be in the insurance business and one of the, the, the bad things that, that insurance companies did not like were buildings that were vacant. And Pueblo is not unique. I think towns like Pueblo, we have lots of buildings that are two and three-story. But with no ability to utilize the second and the third story. And my question is whether or not you're going to be dealing with our city. And the reason that we don't get those done is because it's quite expensive. Our codes probably today require an elevator. They require different methods of egress. And, and so that's always bothered me is that we have so much space that's unused, which I think is dangerous, you know, even if the first floor is being utilized. And, and then you got, you know, the issue of, of maybe, I, I know that in, I used to travel to Cedar Rapids all the time and it gets really cold there in the winter and they had a system where they actually had pathways between buildings. And it usually was on the second floor. And it was really intriguing to me that they really utilized the second and the third floor of their buildings. But I would hope that those are the kinds of things that maybe you will deal with about how a city like ours could change their codes to make it more palatable for a contractor or a developer to be able to fill all of those spaces for residential housing, which is our number one priority.
Yeah, if I might respond to that real quickly, just a couple of points of clarification is I think from the zoning code side of things, we can enable the mixing of uses to better allow for those, those to actually be inhabited. One thing we won't be doing is editing your building codes. So from the egress perspective, the elevator perspective, we won't be touching those in this, under this project. That's I'll just say you don't, you don't want us doing that in terms of the code, in terms of, in terms of the building code. That's a much a deeper dive into different issues and things like that. But I think from the way the code's going to be written or the, the way we're going to bring it back to you initially is that those things should be enabled to be used more readily for residential or some type of mixed use on the second and third floors.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Martinez. Well, and how exciting that we have a brand new comp plan, which is super exciting. So I heard that you're talking with Planning and Zoning Commission, which I think is great. I didn't hear the Historic Preservation Commission on your list to talk about or talk to. And actually you have plenty of members in the audience today to pick their brains or just to connect afterwards. I think they would be a great one to talk to.
Yeah, so I, my apologies. I failed to mention that one of our key tasks that we just added upfront here is to go through the existing historic preservation guidelines and update those prior to diving into the code and the standards that would be in the code. And I would look to my partner over here and the Historic Preservation Commission will be engaged regularly.
And I'm sure Wade is into being involved too.
Yes, absolutely.
So I hear the timelines around, you know, it sounds like you're going to present or start writing the codes in September-ish. How long is it going to take you to write the codes and when are you going to be back? Are you like, are you presenting a draft to the public for then other comments or once you present, you're done?
Oh, no, we're, we're not done. We, we haven't totally defined how we're going to put the total code together. The way we typically do it is we're going to be back three different sets of recommendations to all of these bodies and all of our engagement efforts. One is what's being carried over directly from your current code to the new code may be reorganized, but the standards are largely the same. What's going to change from your old code to your new code and where we've made some major or significant changes to your standards or a zoning district, let's say. And then the third pot is things that are brand new to the code based on the comprehensive plan, what we hear from the community in terms of how that needs to be implemented or things like that. We typically like, excuse me, we typically like to break them down into those three buckets as we write each chapter or section of the code. And so we can bring those back in somewhat manageable pieces so that people can digest them. And we do it in a way that as Matt alluded to earlier, if you want to dive in and read every single word of an article of the code, you're more than welcome to. We'll also give you a summary that will tell you. We'll also give you a summary that will tell you exactly what's changing, how it's changing and why.
And what's your timeline on that?
That's the whole drafting process. So we'll bite off articles at a time and do it in those three buckets. And so that was the September through probably March or April timeframe.
Okay.
Because it's quite an undertaking. Yep.
Anyone else? And Dennis was Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I was thinking about this earlier and I forgot to ask you and I apologize. Would you be involved in giving the city advice on energy savings through like net zero construction? You know, all of the codes having to do with how a homeowner or a business owner, for that matter, is able to conserve energy or reduce carbon.
We hadn't anticipated that. It's certainly a discussion we can we can have. We can talk more about that. We typically try and build in some of those sustainability measures in the code in terms of allowing things like photovoltaics or stormwater management or things like that that help reduce costs. But we haven't really defined exactly how what level that would be as as we get more into writing the code, that'll become clearer. But in terms of giving individual advice to property owners, that's probably not something we would undertake under this.
Right, I understand that getting a house or a building into a situation where they are producing zero carbon has is almost equivalent to any kind of other construction because of the savings on one side and and the other. In our community, you may already know this, but our most recent medical building was built a net zero building. It was a $60,000 structure and obviously the savings also includes what's going forward. In fact, I've been told that they're selling their excess of energy that they're producing. We also have the only steel plant in the world now that's going to be totally generated by solar. We have a large contingency of enthusiastic people here in Pueblo that really want us to start moving in that direction. And, you know, I would encourage you to to maybe consider that part of your planning. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, it looks like that's all we have for this evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next we have on the agenda is the Historic Preservation Commission regarding the City Park Tennis Courts Clubhouse Restroom Building and Mr. Consilia. Welcome. Okay.
That was actually the topic of Pueblo Lore, which was the Historic Society's publication that they do monthly. Anyways, we're we're here to discuss the Historic Tennis Facility, which is on the the docket for demolition. Unfortunately, we did have a small presentation prepared. Cool. Set the clicker for it too. Very cool. Thank you so much. Thank you. So this is the the tennis facility located in Pueblo's City Park. And that's the building. We're interested in doing everything we can to preserve here today. Would like to thank everybody from council as well as the mayor for taking your time. We know you have a very busy schedule. So thank you very much. We prepared a short presentation that really highlights the importance to do whatever we can as a community to preserve the rich history that makes up our wonderful city. As Puebloans, we're proud of this history. And one of the fundamental ways of showing this pride is preserving it in any way that we can. So the future generations can enjoy it and learn from it as well. A lesson I think that's been unfortunately learned over the last several decades is that once history is torn down and demolished, it can never be replaced. There's no void that can be filled, unfortunately. Some of the pictures that we have listed here share a small sample of some of the wonderful history that has sadly been lost here locally in Pueblo. You know, some of the grandest buildings that were built here can only be remembered through photographs and old postcards. Some sadly don't even have that history to tell their tale. Unfortunately, there's a long record of historic buildings being demolished here in Pueblo. These demolitions often occurred not because the buildings were in need of tearing down, but because of a lack of maintenance pushed an agenda that they needed to be torn down. Centennial High School, for instance, is said to have been demolished because they needed a new staircase. The Old Eagles Lodge on Fifth torn down because it needed a new roof. For better or worse, Pueblo is a city full of old buildings as we know. And that like all properties, they require maintenance. I think it's a very dangerous precedent to set that not maintaining something properly can be ultimate can be the ultimate excuse to destroy it. Hillcrest Cruise Bags, Congress Hotel, which has been replaced by another one. But the tennis facility is the one at the crux here. It's not been torn down. Yet. It's a very special property that deserves to be saved and preserved. It was built during the late 1930s as part of the WPA program that helped lift the country out of the Great Depression. You know, Pueblo had been hit doubly hard by the Great Flood in 21, Depression followed in 29. And what I learned is that it was really the WPA and other New Deal programs of this era that allowed one of the largest scale investments in public buildings throughout Pueblo and as well as the infrastructure that the city had ever seen, you know, between then and now. I encourage everyone to read the booklets that I provided there on there donated, as I mentioned, from the Historic Society. And they really show a colorful history of the impact that those programs have made on the city. These programs touched almost every part of Pueblo life. They were integral in expanding and making the state fairgrounds into what they are today. Heavily extended street paving sidewalks, sewer and stormwater systems of the city. Miles of new roads, curbs, gutters, countless new bridges were constructed that helped shape the city we know. Extensive work was done right here at Memorial Hall. San Isabel Lake and Recreation Facilities are products of the WPA programs, as is Pueblo Mountain Park at Beulah. Runyon Field saw massive improvements. The State Hospital, one of the largest employers here in Pueblo. Massive expansions due to the WPA programs. It was the Parks Department who was likely the largest beneficiary. There was over 19 new parks that were created from this program. Without the WPA, there's no City Park like we know it today. There's no golf course. There's no zoo. There's no tennis facility. You know, like countless Puebloans, I have an intimate connection with that particular facility. It's where I learned to play tennis, competed during high school competitions. I've got fond memories of fishing at Horseshoe Lake, visiting the school for school trips or, excuse me, the zoo for school trips. Enjoying the kiddie rides, learning to golf at Elmwood, playing frisbee over the stone walls, playing baseball down at the hole. Generally just enjoying what City Park has to offer. The park is arguably the heartbeat of Pueblo's community. And it really wasn't until taking this project on that I learned the deeper history of City Park. I initially thought it was just a collection of interesting buildings that were throughout there that had relevance to the WPA. But it's not. It's the whole City Park, the entire park. There would be no golf course. None of these facilities like we know them today would stand if it wasn't throughout that program. The renovation slash demolition of this building has been discussed for several years. You know, this is going back, I think, decades and unfortunately, it's really seen no maintenance for, you know, upwards of 50, 60 years, no gutters, no downspouts. And we know as property owners that one of the biggest things you needed to need to do to maintain these old buildings is mitigate the water. And, you know, last year, the the Parks Department hired an architect to review the possibility of revitalizing the structure. They came to the conclusion that there was some foundation damage to the tune of approximately a half million dollars needed in repairs. They also came up with approximately $4 million budget to renovate the remainder of the facility. Now, I argue both of these numbers are extremely high. But if the building can be saved for even around a half a million dollars, then I don't see any reason why we wouldn't pursue that option. Ultimately, what they needed, that building is a bathroom complex that can service the tennis facility. And that's really the extent of it. I argue that the architect who is a reputable vermin, they can creatively find a way to make the existing structure work for the needs of the tennis facility. I think everyone would agree $5 million to renovate this sub 3,000 square foot building is very high. As a point of reference into Mr. Flores's point, we're in the process, my brothers and I have renovating the old Solarose Cafe building on Main Street and Third Street. We're activating the second floor, which I think is one of the most important things that we can do throughout downtown Pueblo. But we're doing brand new mechanical systems throughout the 5,000 square foot second floor. New windows throughout the entire upper floor. New mechanical systems, new HVAC wiring, electrical, new plumbing, new had to move walls. We had to get creative to accommodate the layouts. We're doing it this a cost of, you know, under a million dollars, around $800,000. So is it expensive? Yes. But are there ways to do it in such a way that it's not, you know, blowing the budget? Absolutely. I'd encourage everyone as well, once that project's done, to please come down and see what is doable in these older historic buildings. I mean, we didn't cut costs over there, you know, that's that's a full project. And I know there's differences between private and public sector, particularly when it comes to real estate and spending. But, you know, the numbers discussed, they just don't add up. And I think with some creativity from all sides, those numbers can be reduced. You know, we don't need an elaborate structure. It's really the existing beauty of this building that speaks for itself. And what must be remembered is that if it is demolished, it can never be rebuilt. You can't put the toothpaste back into the tube on these things. You look at all the empty lots downtown and, you know, it's a reminder of how many buildings have been lost, unfortunately. You know, no matter what they promise to do, no memory wall or reuse of the stone. Veneer is going to replace the memories that the future generations will be robbed of if it is demolished. And, you know, this building might seem like a small or innocuous piece of real estate in the grand scheme of things. But it's this building, along with all of the buildings throughout the park that were built during this era, the stone walls, the zoo structures, the bridges, the fountains, the moats around the park. Monkey Mountain was built from the dirt that was dug from Lake Troy. It's just a lot of history that was added up here. But all of this together adds the cohesive look that ties the entire area together. It's not just one off building. And it's this look that adds the charm to City Park as well as all of Pueblo. And it's what we're known for and it's what we are a draw for. I sell real estate as a part of my income, recently sold a home to some people who moved here from Olympia, Washington, God believe it. And one of the big draws for them was Mineral Palace Park and City Park. They wanted to be near all the history and what the amenities have to offer. So in my opinion, tearing down structures like this that have historic significance, you know, setting off a dangerous narrative that we really don't care about our history and people that do come to the city for the history, you know, we're throwing that back in their face. I recently did a short drive to Pueblo Mountain Park in in Beulah, which I would also suggest everybody doing if you have a chance. There's a great story of success of preservation, like City Park and the tennis facility. Pueblo Mountain Park was a WPA project as well. Sadly, some of the buildings had gone into disrepair over the years previous. And the Horseshoe Lodge pictured here was looked at for demolition. It wasn't until a private individual had raised some funds, somewhere around a million and a half dollars. They were able to fully reserve and preserve, restore and preserve the 14,000 square foot building that is the Horseshoe Lodge. They creatively reused the space, became an economic driver for the area and preserved it for future generations to ultimately enjoy. The whole area has benefited greatly from this effort. A number of these buildings stand in their original glory today. Similar to City Park, it was the numerous pavilions, the grandstand, the rock walls and bridges, you know, that all come together to help unify what is the mountain park. The Parks Department has, they've argued that there is or has been a lack of community involvement or interest in this project. I I stand before you today, you know, along with the numerous people behind me and my board, as well as many people who I've seen share online messages regarding the demolition of this property in proof that the community is involved. We do care and we care about buildings like this and other ones that are similar to it. My colleagues and I were willing to carry the torch to see that this building is preserved. You know, what we don't want is to be a deterrent to this building and facility being improved. I'm not trying to be a, you know, wrench in the spokes here. What we have over there is a world-class tennis facility. It's really a unique thing for this particular town to have that. Challenges those in much larger communities throughout the state and even the country. Now, it challenges Palm Springs and places throughout Phoenix, Arizona. It's this, it's the host of the only high school state championship hosted in Pueblo. This is an opportunity for the city to showcase to our neighbors up north who, as we know, have a certain thought about us oftentimes, what we're really capable of. You know, through the allocation of the funds that council had made previously, with the caveat that they're used toward the preservation of the facility. I'm confident that we can accomplish what will make everyone happy. A beautifully preserved historic building that serves the needs of the tennis facility as well. If you notice in the slides, there used to be a grandstand that actually stood just south of the tennis building. This was here up until two years ago, actually, when it was sadly destroyed, demolished. That'll never be rebuilt. And besides the few photos that remain, it's going to be forgotten, unfortunately. Demolition should always be the last option. You know, and unless a building is falling down, particularly one of significance like this, every effort should be taken toward preservation. I know for a fact that the tennis building is still worthy because they were using it earlier today. I drove by, patrons are still using that property. It's not condemned. Does not need to be torn down to make way for a new building. One thing that the city does not lack is open space to build new upon. And I am not anti-building new. I'm a developer by trade and I encourage building new. But what we can't be doing is demolishing historic structures in order to make way for these new buildings. Just real briefly, and I'll leave you with that. Another document that that was shared with me by the Historic Society and I shared with you subsequently is the Pueblo Lore copy there. I encourage everybody reading it. It's a very interesting history of Pueblo. But what really caught me is in it, George Williams, who was the former director of the Parks and Recreation Department. He was also the president of the Historic Society. He passed away in 2019, I believe it was. But he was passionate about these buildings. And in the foreword, he states something very interesting and worth reflecting upon, I believe. He says, in summary, the Parks and Recreation System function were dramatically improved by the New Deal programs. Perhaps more importantly, this project, the one that he was doing the research for, made me think of how much of the New Deal work has been destroyed and why didn't we make more of an effort to save it? Or at least a record or image of it. Perhaps the most important question I have is, could I have helped save some of the facilities that I helped tear down? You know, you can hear in his message, his deep regret for allowing the demolition of historic structures. I I challenge you all to reflect on what his words were and not make the same mistake. Thank you.
Okay. And anything more?
Yes, very quickly, I'm Guy Chabot. I sit on the board, also a licensed architect in various states. You hit your mic.
Sorry. I sit on the board. I'm a licensed architect in various states, including Colorado. I've done historic preservation. And I'm a new member to the board and what I've seen is a lot of passion. The what we bring today is is not an argument for one building. It's basically what the previous presentation, present presenters said was it's about the district, it's about an area, it's about understanding a comprehensive family. It's about a vision. It's about where Pueblo wants to be. These historic buildings and especially this, the WPA, which fingers through all of Pueblo are are more than just that one, right? It's it's a need to take the time to explore. It's it's a need to take the time to explore and determine what Pueblo wants to be with this one, with this one element. So this, this was elevated, brought to the, brought to the board. And the passion of the board is bringing it to you for considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Go ahead.
Hey, thank you for that report. You know, it gets discouraging sometimes being up here because when that came forward, I think what, three or four weeks ago, that the I specifically asked if there was a way to save the building. And I was told there's really no way for that to happen. So literally, I'm at a disadvantage if I'm sitting up here and city staff is saying that it can't be, it can't be remedied unless we have all this money to do it. And so the decision was made based upon that information. I did get a call from one member before that meeting that just asked me to ask the question, one member of the Historical Society. So I asked the question. It would have been nice before that, that, you know, this particular council, I don't know if you've talked to other people or or other the the previous council or anything else about this specific building. But I guess I would ask, I would ask staff or the mayor, I mean, we approved that the funding to to move forward. Has that ship sailed?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, it was staff and our architects that we hired and the experts who told us that the building could not be saved. We are using the stone from the building to, you know, try to remedy some of that history. But as far as the amount of money that it was going to cost to restore it, from what we heard is was not something that we should do. And I think Stephen's here. There's more specific questions, President Aliff, for him to answer.
I mean, my big question was, is that the, that the, the money has been approved, the work had been approved. I mean, city council, does city council have the ability to go back and say, forget it? Or we want to reopen it and look at at saving the building? I mean, I don't know where we're at on that.
I think it's my understanding, this project has been in the works since, for a couple of years now, and we're now at the end of the line. And we did approve the last, you approved the last five hundred thousand in ARBA funds, and the project's ready to go out to bid, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Flores.
Is there any reason we can't put a pause on this? It seems logical that it hasn't gone out to bid yet, so we don't have any resources that contractors have expended to put their bids together. It seems as a logical next step because we can, I think we have the authority to undo what we do too. And in this particular case, I'm not asking that we reverse everything that we did. All I'm asking is for a pause and maybe a discussion with individuals that really are in that business of restoring. Has anybody seen the Orman Mansion lately? It is unbelievable what that building has now been transformed. And and there would have been, there could have been an argument about knocking that down and using the redstone on another project. But I I think, I think at this point, we need to pause and really take a hard look at this. And I believe that if you can meet with our people and maybe look at this from a different direction, a different perspective, that there's a, you know, I, I think you're right. You said it best when you said it'll be too late after it's
Yeah, once, once these things are gone, there's no putting them back. I mean, there's, there's a long history of that, like I had mentioned, and to the point, the big overarching goal here is to put a pause. The community has shown that there is interest in not having this building torn down. At your last meeting, I mean, quite frankly, I did watch it. It wasn't totally clear that the money that you approved was going to be utilized in demolishing the existing structure. The way that I interpreted it, that was not made clear. We're going to demolish this and build something new. It was to revitalize and improve the existing structure. So I believe that if that, you know, encompasses you guys, you know, kind of giving a death sentence to this building, then there should be a reflection on that.
All I'm doing is asking for a pause because maybe it, maybe the opposite happens. Maybe the costs are just over the top. I mean, we, we're, we've had this problem with the plant five and six with Black Hills. Believe it or not, that conversation started in two thousand fourteen. And everyone, I mean, we've probably had five or six proposals that none of them ever worked out. But I got to believe that, that there's got to be a certain dollar amount in which even the Historical Society says.
Yeah, and I, I would agree five million dollars. I would never, you know, suggest the city spend money like that in that type of fashion. That's, in my opinion, a waste of money. I, I truly believe in, if you break it down on a cost per square foot, you know, it's an astronomical number. That's what condos in Manhattan sell for. It just doesn't make any sense. So what I think is that the budget should be relooked at. If there's a way that we can cut some fat off of that project, maybe we do it in phases such that we preserve the building, provide the tennis facility what it needs, and perhaps create a master plan for that whole tennis facility. I'd say the overarching thing that everybody wants unilaterally is more pickleball courts. You know, if you put some type of bill together that would offer some pickleball courts, you could raise several million dollars from the public. There's ways that money can be raised. I think that I could assist in this raising of the money. You know, the, the thought that there's not community involvement. The gentleman who saved the, the Horseshoe Lodge, it was one guy. You know, one guy got up there and put his neck out. And that's how things get done. So people are here, they're willing to, to take that endeavor on. And to the, I don't think anything's ever said and done. You know, until the, the wrecking ball has gone through those bricks, I think that there's an opportunity to save that building. If contracts aren't drawn, you know, I know from a business standpoint, that means that there's still opportunity here to to change things. And again, I mentioned it before, I don't want to be the deterrent here. It's a fantastic facility that we have over there. You know, let's embellish it. Let's keep what we have and provide new where it's needed, but I don't think we can do that at the cost of tearing this building down. There's too many old buildings around Pueblo. That can't be the precedent that we set. And I'll do anything, you know, we can to relook at the budget. I look at budgets, you know, related to real estate all the time. So if Mr. Meyer would be open to having me in those discussions, I'd be happy to be there. And yes, I think five million dollars is crazy. I would not suggest you guys spend that, but I firmly believe that that building can be saved. The big thing too, just so you guys know, they believe the foundation is failing. There was an older building, the original building, then in addition had been put on sometime in the seventies. So there's two roof lines at me. The roof lines have a gaping hole in them right now, so that there's been water intruding that roof line for the past minimum ten years since I can remember. There's no downspouts off of the building. There's no gutters on the building. There's no way for the water to get pushed away from the foundation, which is the most integral thing to do for these old buildings. There's an argument from their side that the lake is the one that's penetrating this. I call false on that. If there was that much deterioration from the lake, the building would have fallen down a long time ago. So it doesn't need to be torn down, shouldn't be torn down. If it was that much of a you know, a hazard, then people wouldn't be utilizing it. I mean, the city's still utilizing it up until this day.
Thank you. I, I would, I would entertain a consideration of this council to just put a pause at this point. I don't think we lose anything. So I'm a yes on that, putting a pause.
Can I make a suggestion, please? Mr. Hayes and Mr. Meyer, can you please come to the mic? Because I have a couple of questions to ask you. So we're two years into this project, basically from the start. Are we about two years into it? How much money have we spent so far? Are the designs complete? And how much about, approximately how much money has been spent on those designs?
I would say in the architectural fees, we've probably spent sixty seven, sixty thousands, maybe seventy. I don't know exactly what we spent the last two years with. HGF, we went out to RFPs, you know, a couple of years ago, hired them. And they brought a team of structural engineers and everybody to take a look at this. And so that is their recommendation without, you know, doubling the cost.
So in Mr. Flores's plight to find out the information, do you think maybe we can bring those engineers in on this project and just explain to us why they just, we decided to go with a new structure over preserving the structure? I mean, because they are the professionals. They've done all the testing necessary to determine the integrity of the structure and whether or not, I mean, I'm not discounting anything that Mr. Concilia said, but they are the hired party that comes in and can give us, and that would be just a quick overview.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to come in. We, we had the architect, we brought the architect to talk to them at the HPC meeting. We came to you guys, I want to say around the end of July, January, and presented to you the whole package of where we're at, what the design was looking like and all that, and why we, why we were having the demo, the building and and the structural, but the structural engineer didn't come to that presentation. It was just the architects and us.
Yeah, we can have that, and then we can have the architect's recommendation for budget and why we're at, what is it, five million?
Yeah, just between, it's just around a little over four more likely.
That way we have a quick overview and then we could, is that what you're looking for?
I'd like for you to meet with the Historical Society again, especially Mr. Concilia. I mean, he certainly has a lot of experience in renovating older buildings. And I, I think, I think it's worthy of a discussion at this stage of the game. We got nothing to lose here.
Well, he just said that they
We could have those discussions. I think he needs to talk to our engineers. We hire structural engineers for a purpose to come in and look at the structure and assess it and tell us if it's feasible to renovate or if it's not feasible. And the recommendation is, if you, you can save the building, it's just going to cost you twice as much. And so, I mean, it's all doable. It's just whether, I mean, they need to, he, if he wants to talk to the structural engineer, I think that's a possibility.
Where did the five million dollars come in? Where was that?
Those are estimates from the architect.
Their estimate for the demolition of the, I'm sorry, for the renovation of the existing facility. The biggest element of work that has to be done is to redo the foundation on that structure. So despite Mr. Concilia's engineering background, there isn't, there is groundwater there that floods into that basement. It's been partially filled with concrete at some point in time as well. And so everything that can be done with that foundation has been done. The architect and structural engineer have evaluated that foundation and determined that there are helical piers that need to be installed in order to save that foundation. And even then, they're only saying that it might last for ten to twenty years.
But they just got the soils report back and the helical piers probably are not possibly have to
I mean, even having, even if we renovate this building and turn it into something that we want to use, it's not something that's necessarily going to last a long time. This is going to be a long-term, high-dollar-per-square-foot commitment from the city. We're talking about a project that is going to be about one point eight million to construct a new facility that honors the legacy of the old building that was there. We're removing a bathhouse facility, not a, not, not a tennis court or a, it's, it's, it's not built for this intended purpose. And the ability to convert this building into something that is usable is going to be very, very challenging, if at all possible. Turning, when we renovate a building, we don't have a choice about whether we get to meet ADA codes or not. And if the building after renovation doesn't meet ADA code, we can't open it to the public. It's not, it is, it is, it is grandfathered to the point now because we haven't touched it since ADA codes have kicked in there. But the moment we touch that, we can't get ADA bathrooms in there. We can't very easily make the other renovations that are going to fit there to fit the intended use of the tennis course, tennis court clubhouse. So there's a lot of significant challenges. The architect presented them as options, but they're not feasible options for being able to keep the building in its intended use and make it work going forward.
And I would just like to point out one thing is I've been working on this for years and I've worked in the city for, you know, over almost thirty years. And at County for ten years, and I've probably saved and worked on lots and lots of historic buildings and and saved, you know, a lot of them. And believe me, we started out with our intention was to save this building and to renovate it and make it a part of the architecture and and a restroom facility for the tennis court. It's just come back that it's just too grander of a cost. I don't think we need to put on the taxpayers. And so it's sure, it can be saved, you know, at twice the amount, but is that something that needs to happen? This building's truly falling down and crumbling and the foundation is, and these are just preliminary numbers that the architect's throwing out right now. So if they get into the details and the design work and the engineer work, you know, it may increase in cost. We don't know what that is, but.
Especially with that soils report having just come back. Oh, we, we finished this because Council Martini said something.
I, I have a couple of questions and I'm sure that you covered them in January. I just have no recollections even. So how much is it? So Andrew just said the new building to cut, to totally redo or to totally build is one point eight million?
One point nine million, I'm sorry.
One point nine million. And we appropriated funds to only do five hundred thousand of that?
To remove and rebuild.
Okay, yeah. So there were multiple sources of funds being allocated to the project. The ARPA funds was, I believe, five hundred thousand, but there's also public and private money going into the project.
To subsidize the rest of the money. So five hundred thousand from ARPA.
We've, yeah, we've, we've called the other money over the years. It started out with a couple hundred thousand dollars that was been sent in a restroom renovation project for the tennis courts for years. And I think it was around two hundred thousand dollars. And so then we've found out that wasn't enough. And so we've slowly added money from lottery funds. We've added money from ARPA funds. We've gotten a grant from Rawlings Foundation. And I think there were some
Oh, I remember you saying that now.
Yeah, general funds were put into it.
And for the new building, was the plan to demolish the existing building and then put the new building right on that parcel of land? How would that, if there is groundwater though, that's seeping, how would that fix anything?
That we wouldn't be putting in a basement. It'll be a different type of foundation altogether would be much less likely to be affected by that issue.
It's a cross space, but then most of the, or half the building, I think half the building's on slab. So we would be able to put, you know, drainage system around it and not be in the basement.
But it would be on the same site lot.
Yes, it has to be on the same.
And then what was the original timeline for this?
Well, the original, original timeline went ten years ago. This thing's been going on for years and, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to get grants. We've tried to, you know, get involvement. And it's just dwindled around where we've had to cobble the money recently on government funds. And so that's why it was important to get something done sooner than later. I noticed we, we hear railroads from the state, you know, TASA about state tennis tournaments and, you know, the restrooms are our biggest, their biggest complaint about our facility is our restrooms. And so it was a goal of ours to get those replaced over this winter.
And this is going to be a really naive question, but so it's, it's a bath, it's just a restroom, correct? Or what's currently in there?
There's a, well, it's an old bathhouse, so it's had, it did have showers, but now there's just restrooms. It's got a little office space, a conference room, a storage room in there right now, between the two, the old building and the new building. And in the new building, we would need a conference room. It would have restrooms, conference room, and kind of a called a pro shop, little pro shop that, you know, sell tennis balls and that kind of stuff out of when it's open.
Okay, and the restrooms are not open to the public right now, though. It's only for city staff?
They're open when the facility is open. The restrooms are pretty tacky, though. I mean, they're pretty rough, but they are open and I'd be surprised if they all work. Probably not.
They're also configured in a way that I believe you need, it's either eight and a half or nine feet of space, and we're we're about a foot short on space to be able to make them ADA compliant. So in order to, once we start touching the once we start touching the building and we bring it up to code, there's just no way to make those restrooms work in the way it's currently configured.
Right. And then, so I know Mayor Graham just touched about uh, reusing the stones. Can you talk a little bit more about what the historic plan was? Also, I just thought of another question. Is there a local stamp of historic preservation on it? Cause I know it's not on the state registry, but on the local registry, is there a stamp on it?
No, there's no local designation.
Okay.
The only thing it has is it's got that plaque on the ball. It's WPA.
Can you talk then a little bit about what the plan was that you talked about? And I'm sure that you talked about this in January. I literally just can't remember about what the uh, historic nod was for the new building besides reusing this.
Memorialize the old building. We were going to do an interpretive display inside the building and also reuse the stone where we could on the outside that we could salvage.
I got something.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Uh, Counselor Gomez.
Do you guys have any issue in reference of these buildings with the flooding or recent flooding that's been having our access getting to those buildings flooding? Do you have any of those issues?
No.
The reason I'm asking, I, I have an affinity for all the buildings. I happen to live in one. It's 130 years old. And I was concerned about that flood issue with you guys. But um, do you remember a place called Betson Clark's Curio Shop? Any of you guys from the historical guys? Betson Clark's Curio Shop. On the corner of Walmart and Mace. I got the original floors. I got the original counters from that. And it was when the the flood wiped us out in what, 21? All the county records, all the city records. So the best they could do was come up with a born date of 1900 for that whole area. Northern Avenue used to be the farthest area north. So believe me, I have strong affinity for what you guys trying to get done. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Flores.
What is the square footage of this building? I, I thought I heard 3,000, but is it?
The existing building or the new?
No, the existing building.
Make a slick difference. I don't know what the, it is off top of my head. I thought it was.
And yeah, the, the new building was going to be 3,500 square feet.
So, so the old building is right around that area.
It's probably just right under that. So.
Yeah.
The reason I bring. Extension on it as well. It's been built on. So you've got a couple of, a couple of parts of the building.
Yeah. The reason I bring that up is whoever came up with five million uh, to renovate that building, that, that would mean that the square footage cost is around 1,007, $1,700, which uh, in my mind, you could build a mansion uh, at, at that kind of cost per square foot. That, those numbers don't resonate with me that they're even plausible or, or correct. Uh,
Yeah, there's, if we have to dig out the foundation, there's going to be, digging out the foundation will be a significant part of that expense. Yeah. I mean, that's reconstructing the foundation of the building, lifting the building and, and rebuilding that. It's going to be a major part of this work. So it's not just a matter of, you know, redoing the walls or painting or.
It sounds like you guys have a very, very sound argument that this is not going to be financially feasible. So you would have no, uh, you, you don't have any reservations about meeting with Mr. Concilia and reviewing it one more time and just putting a pause before we put it out to bid.
So what, I mean, what, what we've talked to him about in the past was how did we come to this decision, whether to renovate or replace the building? And were the assumptions valid or not? Uh, and so we reviewed those assumptions that the architect had made. Uh, just trying to make sure that there wasn't a mistake in decision about at, at the time, at the beginning of design, whether we're going to proceed with a renovation or, or a replacement. And we've done that. And the assumptions that the architect made were valid. I understand that even outside architects may have looked at this and, and uh, kind of come to that same conclusion. Um, I, I don't, there, there's nothing in here from a, from a rough engineer's estimate at the beginning of a project to determine whether you're going to go one path or the other. There was nothing in there was that, that showed or bore out that they had made a, a poor decision on that point.
So you're sticking with five billion dollar number?
Well, well, five or four, it's still twice what it's going to cost us to build the new building.
It's more than four.
Given where we are with other city facilities, we have a million and a half square feet of facilities that the city is going to take care of. And I'm not sure we're fully funding all of those either. So this is one that we have to commit a long term to.
I can't think of any buildings that the city have torn down. That's, or could even be a historic building that, that I've been on the watch here. So we, we're pretty good about trying to save everything we can. As, as Andrew will claim to.
I mean.
So the replacement cost, a, a new building is approximately 2 million, right?
These are using preliminary.
And a renovated building is somewhere between four and $5 million.
Something in that range. It depends on the extent of renovation, but the extent of renovation required to make it usable would be toward that higher end.
Has it been tested for asbestos and all of that?
Uh, I believe it has, but it has. Relatively speaking, I, I don't think that's going to be a major expense compared to what you're used to seeing. When we come up and talk about demolition costs, those are open air abatements. These are much going to be much smaller. If you don't have friable asbestos, it's much easier to abate in general.
I always know that's a big part of.
It can be.
Renovation. Okay.
Just one last question. There's no other spot you can put the new building. It would be a better spot, a better, uh, less water, uh, letters. Um, it just seems like we have a lot of space at City Park, but maybe.
Yeah. We do. But I mean, the tennis courts are this long bank of courts, you know, from one street to the next street. It's the little edge hole dent, you know, that's made in the, kind of in the middle of the tennis courts does, you know, build around the restrooms. So this kind of convenient spot for the restrooms in the center of the courts. If you build it at one end or the other, it's, it's quite the job.
Uh, Mr. Latino.
Thank you, Councilor Regina. I, uh, I have to support the uh, Historic Society. I, I think Pueblo, Pueblo has a lot of history and when I think about the Congress Hotel, which is in this booklet here, this manual, growing up and, and, and all the things that are gone now, it just, it breaks my heart. Um, and when we talk about Chassa and their state tennis tournament, restrooms are restrooms. I was on, on the Chassa Executive Board. So, um, again, it's about history. It's about preservation of history. And we've lost a lot of that and demolition of these, of these historic facilities. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going to support the preservation.
Well, it, it could be, it, the, it could be re-renovated and the historic building can be kept. You got to understand, you're going to pay the price. We're going to pay the price and it's going to delay getting a new facility, probably quite a bit more.
One of the pieces, Counselor, that needs to be aware of is the use of ARPA funds. Uh, there's a timestamp on that. So all those funds need to be obligated before the end of this year for uh, September 30th, I believe, or end of this, anyway. Um, it, it, it's a potential loss of use of funds. It might be a consideration.
Okay. Um, Counselor Flores.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, you know, uh, to Joe especially, that we've, we've already dealt with this and we've given the direction to demolish the building. All I'm asking for is a timeout uh, to see whether or not they can talk to, to professional people, historical people and to Mr. Concilia uh, that there is something that he has in mind that can uh, reduce the cost considerably. All I'm asking for is a timeout at this point. Uh, and uh, I don't know, I'm just thinking 30 days because I, I know the time is of the essence and you probably want to get this done before uh, before the, uh, the winter sets in and uh, you know, I understand that. But I, I think it's, it's worth a discussion. Uh, because once, once you tear it down, it's gone. And I think they're amenable to being convinced that uh, maybe it's not salvageable. And even they have just mentioned earlier that they, uh, you know, they uh, you know, would, uh, would, would agree with us. And uh, that's all I'm asking for is a 30 day timeout and uh, allow these people to get together with the two of you. And uh, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I, I think it's worth looking at.
Do you gentlemen need 30 days to do something like that? Or would you just?
Oh, we stop meeting soon as we can. They could sit down with the engineer and discuss it.
So would you just be um, to having a meeting and then once the meeting?
All we're asking for is to, just a pause. It's basically not a timeout. It's a pause.
If I could, we're right in the process of finishing up design. Nothing has been contracted. Nothing is going out to bid. And so I don't, if, if we can finish that process, we don't delay that. So we are ready to proceed if we need to move forward. One of the elements again is that the timeline is short because of the use of ARPA funds. Uh, but certainly it's not something that we're ready to go pull the trigger on, uh, sitting out a, a bid right this minute. So having a conversation is certainly not out of the question.
Okay. All right. Um, does uh, we need to take some direction from counsel to?
I don't think so.
Not going to be a debate now.
Sorry, guys. We're all friends anyways. We've been. This discussion, it was relatively heated. Um, and the latest was that they're going to invite the engineers in to open up the books and show some of these numbers that that never did ultimately happen. Uh, but to the uh, point of it not being historic, as you guys know, the picture that I noted there, it is the original tennis facility. That's where the tennis courts originally were. So to say that this was not historic because it was actually only the waiting facility. Firstly, that's inaccurate. And secondly, even if that was accurate, it would make it even more historic. One thing that's cool about historic properties is the use and reuse in different capacities over the course of time. The Union Depot, although we'd like to have it become a train station again, is no longer a train station. It doesn't mean it's not historic. Um, so yes, to your point though, Mr. Flores, a pause is what I'm asking for, what the commission's asking for. Um, you know, i- i- it likely is going to be slightly more expensive. And I, 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 I still don't agree with that because nine out of 10 times when you have a foundation and walls, it's cheaper than to build new, especially when you factor in the demolition code. Um, you know what? Uh, what's, you know, I, I, I just think that we can do it in a way that's cheaper than what they're stating. Um, you know, and I think that there's monies that can be raised to fill in that short gap. And I'll, I'm also about the appropriation of the ARPA funds, you know, however much that needs to be put forward. Definitely don't want to lose out on that. But the architects indicated that the foundation can be um, shored up. There's a, a process called underpinning. Um, and what they said it was that it would cost about a half a million dollars. So the half million dollars from that, in addition to the 1.3 million that's already raised, 1.3 million dollars in this sub 3,000 square foot building will go a long way. You uh, buttress that with monies that I believe are available via grants because of the historic nature of this building as well as community fundraising. There's people out there willing to give money towards these causes. So let us make up the short gap. You know, don't, don't, don't allow, you know, more history to be torn down um, at the cause of just wanting to build a new facility. And as you mentioned, there's tons of room over there. You know, if, if we want to build something new, let's take one of the, you know, one of the many acres that sits over there vacant.
If I could just say a few things. I'm Laurel Campbell. I'm the Goodnight Barn. So I know what, what it takes to uh, restore something. But there are, there's a, first of all, let me just say that this should have come before us. The Preservation Commission. Why did it never come before us? What are we here for? If we're not to have opinions, we're all qualified. We know what we're doing and why in the world we were not ever told about this when it is a historic property. That's the first thing. It may, it may down the line be something that should be, it should be written into the code, but they have to come before us. If it's a city property and they want to destroy it, we should have that chance to say something about it. The second thing is, has anybody talked to Dorothy Butcher? She has an idea. I wish she could have been here. She said, and I, I think this is possible to at least consider, go north toward the city entrance, the, the, and you'll have a much larger area. You can just continue the courts, build a new clubhouse or whatever you want to do. Keep the historic one just for history's sake. You don't have to, you could do something maybe to shore it up, but not a lot of money into it. Except maybe some more maintenance, but you need to speak with her. I wish she had been here today. She had a wonderful idea. Just move it north. You've got all that land. Nothing's there but a picnic table. Okay? Um, the other thing I wanted to say is that we are that our commission, we are experts at what we do. And there have been times when we have made a decision and the city council has decided otherwise. Nobody asked us to come and talk. What are we for? Have we, do we have any kind of, of uh, what am I trying to say? Does anybody listen to us? Do they come to us? We know what we're doing. And I would love to work with you guys and let you know that you need to talk to us about these things, not just make decisions. We had a decision on the guy down the street and you overturned ours. There's nothing we could do about it at that point. And yet why you had to come in and do that is beyond me without us talking to you about how dangerous it was to allow that to happen and what's going to happen in the future because of that. So those are the three things I wanted to mention. I love the city. I love the history. I love working with the guys that I worked with, uh, Andrew and, and Steve. And it's just an opposite opinion. But we have a place in our, in our commission and nobody comes to us.
Let me just briefly leave this. I know it's been a long one. Um, I know that they're saying that it's been the intention to save this building for many years, going as far back as a decade. But as I mentioned, it sat with an unimproved roof, no downspouts and no gutters for that same period. If they had any intentions of preserving this building, they'd have done it seven years ago, you know, when Stephen Meyer took over his Parks and Recreation Department. Um, you know, they had ample opportunity to fix this building over that tenure and they haven't taken up on that. So I don't think that they've ever had any real interest in preserving this building. I think you guys can force that agenda because it's the right thing to do, particularly in a building that's full of historic properties. As I mentioned, if we set this precedent where we start tearing down historic buildings, I mean, there's one after the next, after the next. You know, all the foundations on Union Avenue are made of the same material that this foundation is made of. Um, there's no difference in these buildings. So, um, you know, I think that it can be preserved, it should be preserved. And anything that we can do to pause the demolition and explore other options, uh, perhaps other opinions from maybe not another architect, you've already contracted this one, but um, you know, another engineer on ways that we can salvage the foundation, keep the building, do it at a cost that's not, you know, upwards of four to $5 million. So, thank you all again.
Um, well, thank you for coming and letting us know how you feel. Um, I'd like to ask something of the Historic Preservation Commission. Your relationship is into, in, is to, to protect the historic properties here in town and that relationship is built through the city's administration. You've put us in a position where things have gone, taken place and due to the lack in communication and breakdown between the Preservation Commission and the uh, city directors that you work with. Um, now we're supposed to come and, and correct this situation. I would express that you, I'd like to express that you keep that lines of communication open. And before we go through the expense of hiring consultants and architects and spending tens of thousands of dollars that these things, these matters get handled beforehand because that's what has happened here. Now, I'm not saying whose fault it is. I'm just saying it's a breakdown of communication. Because regardless, the tens of thousands of dollars that we have spent on this have, will go to the wayside if there's a change in what we do moving forward. So we just need to keep those things in mind as a commission that uh, we don't let it get this far. And we, we went ahead and we opened the dialogue between you and the departments. Um, but if you have any future issues where you're not being told things until after the fact, we need to know before, before these decisions are made. So I appreciate it. Great. Great. Let's keep it up. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So um, any other questions from counsel? Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, we are.
Adam, Chair, I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24 dash 6 dash 402, paren four, uh, paren I. And negotiations. And negotiations and/or, and receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24 dash 6 dash 402, paren 4, paren B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Instructing special counsel with respect to settlement negotiations in pending personal injury lit- litigation. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation or formal, formal action shall occur at any executive session that is not open to the public. Second.
All those in favor? Seventeenth, the time is seven twenty-seven PM and we will, are adjourning the work session. We'll be returning in five minutes.